Have Gina run up. Do you have the key to that? We are ready whenever you have everyone.
Okay, we're waiting for. We have six of us here, so let's, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we're on item three, public hearings and presentations due by the board.
Recognitions first. Sorry, you're right, I'm sorry.
Recognitions, the Board of Education would like to congratulate Cameron Falkenhay for being selected as the regional winner of the John T. Belcher Memorial Scholarship offered by the Future Builders of the Missouri School Boards Association. Cameron will receive a nonrenewable $1,000 scholarship to the college or university of her choice. She was presented with a plaque on this past Monday, March 29th, at the MSBA Spring Regional Meeting held at Mary's R2 School District. So Cameron, if you'll come up, we'll get you a certificate and a photo.
And Cameron was the local winner here in Rolla and then moved on to the regional competition of all the other school districts in Region 12 for MSBA. And was selected as the winner in this region amongst all of those school districts and will now move on to the, her essay that she wrote will now move on to the statewide competition of all the regional winners. So we wish.
Thank you for giving me this award. I'll put it towards Maryville next year where I'm going to get my nursing degree after four years, so it means a lot, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
So obviously, we will wish Cameron the best of luck at the statewide competition and hope that we may bring her back again for another recognition in the future.
Yeah.
So thank you, Cameron, we're very proud of you.
The Rolla Board of Education would like to recognize Board President Jim Packard for completing the requirements for Missouri School Board Association's Advanced Board Member Certification. Each board member is required to complete eighteen and a half hours of training. Mr. Packard has completed twenty-eight hours of training, including required electives. Thank you, Jim, for your dedication.
Okay.
Don't you guys go out front, we'll get a picture out front.
Yeah, required twenty-eight hours, I think I have a hundred and some hours and because of the pandemic, I decided no time like the present to finish writing my paper, which is what I was required, so.
How many hours you say you have?
I have a hundred and some hours. I'll have to check my record, but I had enough, I did my master's paper and found out yesterday that that had been approved, so. I, no, I've got it printed off because I had to figure out some things. Okay, anyway, it was good, good time to reflect. Item B, questions from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda will be granted five minutes to make a presentation to the board. Please state your name for the record. Presentations on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda will be granted five minutes to make a presentation, please state your name for the record. Okay, so we're going to item four, consent agenda. A consent agenda is utilized by the Rolla Board of Education as a means of dealing with routine matters which must be considered by the Board of Education but require a minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the consent agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education member is welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason, normally, all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion. So tonight, we have items A through I. And we have a retirement that we're going to approve, so while I'm looking that up, we'll go ahead and I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And with that, we approve the retirement of Denise James, a teacher aide at Rolla Junior High, who's retiring after fifteen years with the district. So wish her well in her retirement after the end of the school year. Okay. Okay, so now we're on to new business. Dr. Williams will present information about administering the MAP assessments in the district, so. Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Myra. The Missouri Assessment Program, which I've spoken about before, we refer to as MAP in Missouri. The grade level assessments evaluate the student's progress as do the end-of-course exam toward the Missouri learning standards. The Missouri learning standards define the knowledge and skills students need in each grade level and course for success in college, other post-secondary training, and careers. These expectations are aligned to the Show Me standards, which define what all Missouri high school graduates should know and be able to do after leaving our school district. A policy statement adopted by the Missouri State Board of Education designated the purpose of the Missouri Assessment Program as these four things. Improving our students' acquisition of important knowledge, skills, and competencies. Monitoring the performance of Missouri's education system. Empowering students and their families to improve their educational prospects and to support the teaching and learning process. This year, we have four different sets of students rather than the two that we normally see. We have virtual students in grades three through eight. Virtual students in high school, Algebra I, Biology I, English II, and Government. Seated students in grades three through eight. And seated students in high school, Algebra I, Biology I, English II, and Government. The grade levels and content areas tested in each area, I want to go over those because I have had a few parent calls wondering about why some students test three days and some students test two days. In English Language Arts in grades three through eight, there are four sessions for grades four and eight. There are three sessions for grades three, five, six, and seven. In math, in grades three through eight, there are three sessions, and in science in grades five and eight, there are two sessions. Grade level assessments include multiple types of questions as do end-of-course tests. They have select response, constructed response, or short text, performance tasks, events, and writing task items. As you can see on this particular slide, at the high school, we give an assessment at end-of-course for Algebra I students, Biology, English II, and Government students. If a student has taken Algebra I before they enter high school, we cannot count that toward their fulfillment, instead, they have to take a more advanced Mathematics, Algebra II course. So we have a number of students, which is a pleasure to us, that are mathematically oriented and go ahead and start Algebra II in high school. Each test produces an individual student report that includes an achievement level, which will describe the student's performance as below basic, basic, proficient, or advanced. The report also includes a short description of the knowledge and skills that are typically demonstrated by students in each academic level, achievement level. It's important to remember, we are not grading students, but rather, we're evaluating the forms of instructional delivery and how the district may improve our instruction to promote student learning. Whether virtual or seated, we wish for the best curriculum and instruction for our students. Virtual students from all platforms will test in our current location. The Rolla 31 Administrative, except for high school, excuse me, three through eight, will test in the Rolla Board Room. Using the calendar provided. Students will not need to bring any supplies, as both scrap paper and pencils will be distributed to them upon arrival. The scrap paper will be discarded at the end of each session, and the students will take their pencils home with them because we will not reuse the same instruments. As you can see here, we begin Monday. April 5 and 6, we will test third grade in this room. Fourth grade will be the following week for three days. Fifth grade and sixth grade will be the next week. Fifth grade is April 19, 2021, sixth grade is April 22 and 23. Seventh grade is April 26 and 27, and eighth grade is May 3rd, 4th, and 5th. I have corresponded with every virtual family, and I have sent them a signup list on Signup Genius, so they may choose which term fits best for them, because I've given them an offer for a morning test or an afternoon test. Our seated students have a different schedule. They will test in their building with their corresponding teacher. Third grade will begin April 27 through May 7. Fourth grade, April 26 through 30. Fifth grade, April 26 through 30. Sixth grade, April 26 through 30. Seventh grade, May 17 and 18. And eighth grade, May 10 through May 13. At the high school, this is the one area that everyone needs to pay close attention to because both virtual and seated high school students will assess at the high school on the dates given above. All high school students who are in government will take the test at the Rolla High School April 22 through April 30. Algebra I and Algebra II will take the test on April 26, and that will remain open until May 4, that's when the scores will be delivered back, or the window closes. English II, May 3 through May 11, and Biology I will be May 6 through May 14. Sherry Norman, the high school assistant principal, will be contacting all virtual parents and students to let them know specifically when their student is required to test.
Will the virtual students be in the same classroom with the seated students?
I think not, I'm uncertain, but I think not. I think that the classroom instructors deliver their specific test to their students, and Sherry will have the others in a separate location. Okay. Make sure I've covered everything, I think so. Are there any other questions about my presentation tonight?
So regarding the virtual students that will be testing here, how's the signups going?
Excellent, so we have about ninety-five percent of our students who are virtual in third grade have signed up for next week.
Oh, wonderful.
Right, so it's been very positive. Parents have been so cooperative, it's a wonderful, and just as we always remind everyone, we want to make sure the students rest the night before, they eat a great breakfast or lunch before they test, and we'll try to take care of them our very best while they're here. I have the contact information for every virtual parent, so that I may contact them immediately when their child is ready. Are there other questions?
Just a couple of comments, so from the state board side, we've talked about this, but just a reminder, you know, the giving of state assessments was a national issue that a lot of states grappled with, and you know, the question was, is it appropriate to give state assessments in the spring during a year like this, based on what we face? And Missouri is moving forward with it, which we are very comfortable with. We think it's valuable information to have about how our kids are doing and where we stand instructionally as compared to regular years, I think that's important. However, the state board did recognize the unusualness of this year, so they have taken a couple of steps. Number one, they have removed the state test scores from any level of accountability on our IMSIP report for school districts in Missouri. So the information is being used for our information about how our kids are doing. It's not given score points like I've presented to you before on an APR. They have tried to shorten the test as much as possible, not by reducing the content, but by pulling out the field test questions that are normally part of the tests that kids take. Normally, there's questions in there that are being field tested for possible use in the future. They removed all of those and shortened tests by around twenty-five percent. Now, our other big concern was that we are always held accountable for testing at least ninety-five percent of our students. One of our concerns was, would we be able to get in enough virtual students to hit that ninety-five percent cutoff, which I think we will. Through Dr. Williams has done a really nice job of reaching out, contacting, so I don't think ninety-five percent will be a problem. However, the state has asked for a waiver from the federal government to reduce that number to an eighty-five percent limit to recognize that not all parents are comfortable bringing their kids into a school to take tests. So the required percentage is down to eighty-five percent. If there's an area that we don't hit eighty-five percent, which I, again, I don't think that will be a problem, we will have the ability to retest some of those kids who did not test in the fall. There will be a special fall testing window offered by department to get those kids so that we can get our eighty-five percent for compliance on that part. So, again, it's not creating a high-stakes testing environment, but it is important that we do tell kids, it's important to give their best effort so that we can know where we stand in our instruction and changes that we may need to make. The hard part about saying, and when I say changes we need to make, there's also the reality that this testing window doesn't end till June fifteenth.
June 15, and it normally is May 30.
Which means the results that we get back are not timely for us to make a lot of decisions heading into next year. We will get them when we get them, but they're often delayed to the point that, that's what makes it difficult, is we don't have the results on August, on July 15th, to be able to implement changes within the school year. But they have promised that results will be back quicker and that we should have some information in the summer that we may be able to begin working with, so.
I want to add to any of our virtual parents that have any questions, or our seated parents. My name is Dr. Julie Williams, I am here at the central office, 573-458-0100, my extension is 11113, and as always, you can email me at jwilliams@rolla31.org, I'm here to help you.
Yeah, and so on the end-of-course test, we get those back quicker?
We do typically get those back quicker.
But they have extended that window to June 15 as well.
Okay.
But I can call them as soon as we've tested every student and have them close our windows so we can get our results back.
Okay. But usually, it's, we're in the fall before we see, August or September before we see the information.
What they've said is that we may be able to get, let me, no, I don't want to turn this the wrong way, I think we may get individual test reports first, but not aggregated results till later, and it may be the other way.
That has happened many times in the past, we'll receive the raw scores, and we do a hand calculation, so we ourselves can kind of get an idea.
So it may just take some manipulation on our part, but getting down to the, to each tested standard and how we did on each standard, that's really the valuable part, that's the part we don't typically get until the fall, which makes, that's the difficult part, so.
Okay.
Did juniors take the ACT as well?
Yes.
They've already done that, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Thank you for asking that, thank you.
And our EOL students have completed all of the access testing?
Yeah, our WEADA Access, which is the Missouri test, what's a national test, given for English language learners, we've completed that, and everything has been returned to the company. So we're sitting pretty on that, and they've also extended the MAP alternate test through June 15, as well as the end-of-course and grade level. So I think that's very grateful for them to do that for us, and I'll do my very best to catch as many kids as I can when their parents are willing to bring them in.
And I'll say this lightheartedly, we have all been seeking normalcy, except for state tests, they're not wanting normal in that case, we're hoping for un-normalcy there, but we're happy to have the normalcy of taking them as usual and getting the information out of them.
Yeah, I'm kind of excited to see the kiddos on Monday, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item B under new business is FY 2122 staffing. Dr. Dair will present potential new sped, special education staffing positions.
Give Myra just a second here. Thought, as Mr. Packard pointed out, the requests this year at this time are all related to special education, so I thought I would take just a few seconds here and kind of talk to you about the process and kind of how we look at this and why we're coming to you to ask for additional staff. So we'll talk a little bit about some basic summary information and try to define the need for you, and then I'll share with you our proposed changes. So I want to commend Dr. Stacy Reed and her staff. I can tell you, as we started this conversation a few weeks back, she literally has gone through the district and taken each child in special education and their IEP, their individual education plan, looked at the minutes required for them, looked at where they will be next year, looked at building changes, looked at the early childhood numbers to see who's coming into kindergarten, and looked at our staffing throughout the district and shifted people as best she could. But there's a lot that goes into those calculations, and so we refer to those as caseloads, so it's not just the number of students in the room receiving those direct instructional minutes, it's also the amount of time needed for each student that plays a factor in. Some students have, you know, maybe fifty minutes in their IEP for the week, some have almost full-time special education services, so it depends on each individual student. And then also the number of IEPs that they're case managing, so each of our staff are assigned a certain number of IEPs to directly oversee and case manage along with their process coordinators. So there's a lot that goes into that, and she, I would be remiss to not mention her work there because it is dozens of pages of spreadsheets in great detail that she's pored through. So in relation to our students, we do have a slight increase in our IEP student count, that seems to be in line with most of the state. Students are being identified, that's just all there is to that. But probably more of what we're seeing is a definite increase in service minutes, so the severity of their educational need is increasing, which is requiring more time in a special support situation and requires more staffing, so that's really where the biggest impact is coming from. Want to talk a little bit about federal funding, and I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole here, but there's a perception that we receive all these IDEA, Individual Disability Education Act funds, from the federal government for our special education kids, and that's true. But it, at current, pays for the majority of our paraprofessionals throughout the district, and that's it. So it falls far short of paying for all special education services, so I want, I just wanted to point that out. We do supplement our special education services with local and state funds, much as we do for everyone else. So tonight, we're asking you for two additional teachers. One is an additional teacher at the junior high, that's just to address an increased amount of students in need there. The second is for a full-time teacher at the high school. Currently, we have a teacher that splits her time between the high school and RTI. What we would like to do is shift that person to RTI, RTC, Support for the Learning Center that we now have here at RTC. She does a lot with transitions and testing with that career ed piece, and that's becoming more and more of a focus area from the state, is transitioning our students with IEPs into the workforce through the career ed programs, and that's taking a lot of time on her part, and she also does a lot of coordination with enrollments through at the R sending schools and their IEP students. So we would like to shift her here full-time, and then that would create the need for a full-time position at the high school, so half of what we're losing plus additional time that we've identified as a need there. For paraprofessionals, we have a need for two paraprofessionals at Wyman, one for a cross-categorical room, cross-categorical, basically just meaning a special ed services room, they do a variety of services in that room, and then for one, for the behavior room, and again, that's looking at our early childhood numbers coming up into the kindergarten and first grade areas, and then a para for that junior high resource teacher that I just talked to you about. Big picture, just to step back from that for a second, we, every year, we take a great deal of time looking at the staff as a whole, and we will continue to do that. Mr. Houndsum does a great job of trying to do some enrollment projections, and it's a little difficult this year not knowing what virtual students we're going to have as we move forward and what the picture looks like, but trying to get a hold on that. We do feel like there's potential that we will be able to absorb some staff in a few places. We look at enrollment projections and then multiple factors such as certifications and strengths of our staff. We never want to make it such that our students are losing out on their educational opportunity, so we will avoid that as we need to, but there are, we will take advantage if there are situations where we can absorb and not fill positions that become vacant because people retire or transfer, then we do take advantage of those situations. So in summary, we're here this evening to ask you to approve the addition of three paraprofessionals and two special education teachers. I've given you an estimated cost there, that is salary plus benefits. The paraprofessional costs are based on step one of the salary schedule, because that is typically where we hire paraprofessionals into the district. The teacher salary benefit number is based on dead center of the salary schedule, so it is just a, it could be much less than that, it might be a little more, that's just a budget number for Kendra to work from as we move forward. Any questions, anything I can answer there?
Any questions for Dr. Dair? If not, is there a motion to approve the new position?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, second.
Thank you. Other discussion?
What was the total on that, it'd be around, what, 249, I think is what I calculated?
I didn't add it in my head, so yeah, ninety and 160, so two forty-ish, yeah, roughly.
Two forty-nine. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dair. Item C is the FY 21 Summer School Salary Schedule. Mrs. Atkinsen is coming up to present that. It's on page 44F.
It is, thank you. So this part will be short and sweet, so we've been talking for a year or two now about summer school salary schedule, and looking at it again this year and deciding whether or not we were going to increase it, did a little looking back, the last time it was adjusted was twenty years ago. So we decided that now is a good time to maybe take care of that. So we would like to have your approval this evening to increase the hourly rates on that schedule by $2 per hour. The average cost of that, I went back to the last, I omitted this past school year, it was just too unusual, went back a couple of years prior to that, and the average cost. and the average cost of that will be about $16,000 a year.
Said 16,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any discussion on this? Not, is there a motion to approve the?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Brian? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that, that carried.
Thank you.
All right, so we go on to item D, which is the FY 22 salary proposal. So you're going to present the for approval tonight, so.
Okay, so the salary schedules that we'll be discussing tonight begin on page 44G of your packet. And I just kind of want to set this up in the framework of our school improvement plan. As you know, we always wish to hire highly qualified staff. That is the best thing for our students, and it supports the district's mission and goals of providing a good education. So we're going to start with that. Little background, we have been meeting with the Central Office Advisory Committee, talking about salaries and benefits. We met with them on March 1st and again, just yesterday, late afternoon. We've continued to preview district data and also state budget information as it has become available. So speaking of that, this slide here shows our three main sources of revenue for our budget for next year that I am proposing versus our budget for this year. This has changed a bit from the two weeks ago when I presented, looking at a few other factors. I went back through our property tax calculation. And what we do is calculate the total property tax due and then apply the collection rate to that. Our average collection rate is 97%. Typically, we then further reduce that to be conservative. I went back the last 10 years, and truly, the average collection rate is like 97.86% with only one year dropping tiny bit below 97%, which was just this past year at 96.89%. So I don't have a good argument for budgeting less than 97%. So that 13.9 million reflects a collection rate of 97%. Prop C figure has not changed since last board meeting. Foundation formula, Mr. Hounzum has been to a conference last week where they also spoke towards the formula for next year. DESI, the state, everybody is very adamant that it will be fully funded. I'm still just a little unsure of that. So I have backed off slightly. I was budgeting for the full SAT of 6375 with a reduction factor of 5%. Backed off on that reduction factor and have that at 2.5%. So that's still a little bit conservative. But yeah, the state, DESI in particular, they really are very confident it will be fully funded into next year and possibly even the year following that. And then this slide just shows, again, next year's budget compared to where we think we're going to come in this year for those same revenues. And it's just a $310,000 reduction. And just to reiterate, those budget amounts for next year, I feel are still slightly conservative, maybe just less so than a typical year. Any questions on what we planned to budget for the three main revenue sources?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So just recapping the salary considerations, again, for support staff, we're looking at that $12 minimum wage by January 1st, 2023, only to compete with the local workforce. And then also our teacher salary schedule, looking at step A1 and how we compare to the districts on the Camden and Salary Survey that we are currently ranked number 18 on. So going over the updated support staff schedules, movement cost, so that's moving everybody for a year of service, about $160,000. The 1.5% cost is about $118, and 2% is $157, which is only $39,000 more than the 1.5% we discussed two weeks ago. The teacher salary schedule. Again, movement on that is 210,000, so that's for years of service and degrees earned. We had discussed last week, or last board meeting, about removing permanently the overlay. The cost of doing that at 1.5% is 387,000 roughly, and brings that step A1 to 38,374, which is ranked number five on the survey. 2% is just under 516,000, brings it to 38,544, and number four on the survey. And that is only about $129,000 more than doing 1.5%. The other two changes to some salaries, some miscellaneous salary schedules that are included in the packet tonight. We've had a request for our, for our PAT director, Dr. Brown, to increase our personal visit rate for our PAT instructors from $40 an hour to 45. So that only has an annual cost of about $4,800. We would like to approve that this evening. And then also speech-language pathologists. There is a footnote at the bottom of the updated salary schedule. We would like to pay them at the specialist level. They all are required to have master's degrees. Their master's degrees require 60 additional credit hours, not 30. They're also required to supervise the SLPIs and SLPAs. Those are the speech-language pathologist implementers and assistants. So we would like to recognize their hours for their degree and also their supervisory services by putting them on the specialist column on the schedule. That comes with an annual cost roughly about $15,000 for the two SLPs we have now. I will say we do have two SLP positions posted for hiring currently, so it could be more. However, we're currently paying contractors for those SLP services, so there would be an offset there. But, so those are additional things that, when we're all finished, that I would like for the board to approve tonight. Any questions on those two items?
Since those are contracted positions at this point, what would that cost difference be between a contracted rate versus a, us moving them?
Typically, if we can hire them in-house, it's roughly the same. Sometimes there's a little cost savings. The contractors are fairly expensive. It's also better for our students to have them be employees of the district. They're right there with the students on a daily basis and serving, servicing them, so.
I might add to that. One of the, one of the things we've had to do for supervision for our SLPIs and As is do teletherapy. So some of our SLP, contracted SLPs are actually telehealth communicating in, which is great, except that they're not physically present to help with the therapies and those things. So we're paying for the physical presence in the room, plus the contractor. If we can increase our pay a little bit and attract those people in-house, we, we will, we will see savings out of that and better services for our kids.
Thank you, Dr. Dair.
From the legislative forum, two years ago, there was a session. They talked about positions that were short, there weren't enough graduates. SLPs are on the list, along with social workers, I think. So this will help us better attract some. That's our hope, yeah.
Okay, so looking at fund balance projections, again, I'm still thinking we will end this year about 31.5%. If we increase the base by 1.5%, you can see the resulting fund balances, 2%. It's about a half percent difference from the 1.5%. Those fund balances, again, have been updated since two weeks ago, since I have recalculated our anticipated revenues for next year. And one thing about that I do want to point out with those fund balances for the projections, our revenues pretty much when we do projections remain flat. However, the expenditures continue to increase on those projections because we can anticipate increased expenditures. We don't always know what we can anticipate for revenue increase or not, so. Quick insurance update. Dr. Dair and I had a meeting on Tuesday afternoon with our insurance broker and agent. And the insurance, a representative from the insurance company, we went, poured over tons and tons of data. And then after that, our representative, our agents, rather, got together and they visited. And I had already told them that I was really hoping we could manage to budget a 5% increase with the hope that we can only have an actual increase of 3% later this summer. And they called me today and said they are very comfortable with that. They thought 5% at the most. And really, unless something takes a turn on us, they really thought that 3% actual increase come fall would be very reasonable. So our recommendation to the board tonight is to allow for movement on the salary schedules for years of experience and degrees earned. Increase the current base schedules by 2% in light of the revenue calculations. Adjust the beginning cells of the teacher salary schedule and permanently remove the overlay. Approve the miscellaneous salary schedules as presented, and then approve for a 5% budget increase to health insurance premiums. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? So I'll note the appreciate showing the revenue more, I won't say accurate, but not being as conservative showing it. It doesn't mean you have to spend it, no. The slide on the beginning teacher's salary really didn't indicate that we were moving more than 5% on that beginning teacher's salary from last year. So, and that's a good thing. Again, kids get out of school, and they look and see what other people may be earning without a degree and all the effort they've gone through. So I think it's a good thing for us when we're, we're competing for teachers. Another, another area that may look to be a shortage to keep people employed. So I think that's good. Question concerning when or if we're going to get data from Camdenson for this year?
I think it's, is it usually in the fall?
It is, yeah, I'm sorry. Did you ask when we receive the teacher? It's usually in the fall. That way, they wait till the fall because that way, everybody's made their adjustments and it's current data for the year.
Okay, so did we get one last fall?
We did.
That's the number she's comparing to.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember seeing it, so. Okay. If there's no other questions, is there a motion to approve the recommendation for salary increases for FY 22?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Thank you. Brian? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You can start doing your work to change all those.
Yes, I will. I might test that for tomorrow.
All right. Item E is the future Board of Education issues. Our next meeting is April the 15th, which is the board rego-organization meeting. The May meetings are on May 6th and May 20th. We will go on to old business. Item A is the long-range facility update. Dr. Dair?
So very excited to be before you again tonight. Have some new information to share with you. So if you'll bear with me here, we'll, we'll kind of go through where we are with all the projects. Again, just a reminder, I, I would like to tell you I have new information on there, but it is coming. We've, I've been spending quite a bit of time doing some before pictures and hope very soon we'll be able to do some in-progress pictures and, and videos as we go forward with the projects. So first up, talking about RTI and the junior high. Just wanted to talk briefly with you about next steps and kind of where we are in this process. So the next step coming is, is contract. So that, that will flow through with the, with the contractor, between them and the owner, as us. We will have a pre-construction meeting coming soon. So what we do there is we will bring the building administrators and custodians, maintenance personnel together with the contractor, and we'll talk about what areas they will use for staging during construction. We'll talk in great detail about schedules as far as when they plan to start each piece at RTI, when they plan to actually break ground at the junior high, get some detailed information as far as that goes for our planning purposes. We will talk about traffic, both pedestrian and vehicle traffic because there will be some impact, especially at the junior high to parent drop off and pickup. We'll take this moment to thank Doug James and, and our SROs for their work in that. We've already had a few kind of preliminary meetings to talk about what that could look like and, and some potential solutions to help with traffic flow on the street. And then we'll talk in general about expectations and what our expectations are for job site and, and the process of meeting and going forward with the project. So that, those will all be coming soon. Again, it is our hope that we will be starting those projects within the month. But also, again, mention the, the network upgrade. So we are opening bids tomorrow on that process. So we're hopeful that those will come in, in a positive way, and, and we'll be able to, to do the full RTI network upgrade and at least the north wing here at RTC. We've added the, I'm going to call it the south wing. It's not 100% accurate, but the other wing as an alternate to that to see if, if, how that comes in. But we will, we'll hope for, for that and be able to bring that back to you at the next board meeting for approval. Again, that project will work in conjunction with the construction and hopefully start sometime in mid to late May. This is not new information, but I just wanted to remind you that we did talk about the schedule revisions, most notably at the high school. We are still looking at a summer bid process. We have looked at combining the gym, fieldhouse addition with the band and choir additions into one phase of construction. And so that will shave some time off the overall project, obviously, and then allow us to move into the second phase of just the auditorium, the existing gym conversion to the new auditorium. And same at Truman. We're looking for summer bid process and hope to have that work completed during the next school year. So spend a little time at the high school. We are in the process of finalizing plans. I'm going to share a few of those with you tonight, but I will tell you that as I built this, I changed, I had slides in yesterday that I changed this morning. And I have new emails from our architect, Dennis Lamer, with Honor and Associates that I could insert now, but I didn't have time to do that. So we go back and forth quite frequently, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that we're looking at in, in close measure now. We do have a meeting scheduled for April 13th with some of the high school staff, a series of meetings, I should say. And with the acoustic and sound engineers from McClure Engineering will be on site as well. We'll be talking with, with them specifically about acoustics, sound, and special lighting for the fieldhouse. So we'll, we'll literally go through, what does it look like to have a game? Where do we have our speakers? Where do we have the access points to plug in sound and music and microphones and all those things? Then we'll shift over to the auditorium and do the same thing with the fine arts staff. Acoustics and sound, special lighting there, and the theatrical infrastructure, curtains, rods, flies, lighting controls, sound controls, all those types of things. This is, this is the first round of those detailed discussions. We've talked big picture. This will be detailed instructions, detailed conversations. There will be follow-up conversations, obviously, as we move forward. And then the discussion of the seating in the stage area. And I'll show you this on a map here in just a second. As we've gotten into this a little further, again, the, the theatrical engineers have pointed out a little bit of, of a, I'm not going to say concern, but that's probably the best word, with sightlines and, and the seating arrangements. And so we'll talk with our staff. But they're proposing that we actually extend the stage another couple of feet. But in doing that, we will probably lose one, possibly two rows of seating. So it will cut into our 800 number a little bit, but we think it's more important to have it right than to worry about the exact number of seats. But we will talk through that with the fine arts folks and, and look at their, again, looking at all those pieces such as curtains and all those things. All that plays a role in that. So that's one of the questions we hope to answer through that meeting on the 13th. So share some, and these are a little difficult to see, so I'll do my best to point some things out to you. So just to orient you, the left side of your screen would be Tenth Street. The bottom of the screen would be Cedar Street. So the existing gym would be up top here in this area. This is the existing wrestling room and small gym office areas. So the new gymnasium here on the west side of the office area, connecting corridors along that wrestling room. This is one of the areas that we're in, in large discussion about. So this has already changed. And I'll show you this on a different plan here in a second, a little better detail. But currently in this connecting hallway, we'll talk about that piece with this slide. We've got restrooms and concession stand areas here outside the gym. This area in orange has actually grown a little bit. That's a, that's not a part of this construction project, just an area that we always try to keep in mind future growth. And so what we're showing there is that somewhere in the future, if we had the need for additional classrooms, there's, there's a space there that it would work, and we can plan for that now so that those could be added in the future. now so that those could be added in the future. This entryway, so coming in off of Cedar Street, this would be the main entryway into the auditorium, either through this hallway or through this entrance. The elevations here are challenging. So from the parking area down to the floor level, which the floor level all throughout this area, all the way up even through the gym is the same floor area up into the upper hall of the high school is all the same. But depending on where you are along this, this wall, it's an eight to 10-foot drop. So it's fairly substantial. So I'll, I'll circle back to that here in a second, but I just wanted to point that out. This is a little bit closer view of that gym area. So I would point out to you that what we're currently showing is a main court. There is room for two side court, full court basketball courts and three side court full volleyball courts. So for practicing, definitely an expanded practice area. Seating, we have explored, we, one question we've had is the seat backs. We have explored that and we'll have information for you on that soon. Locker rooms on both sides under the upper deck, so there's a total of four locker rooms. Training facilities, ample storage, you know, PE equipment and volleyball standards, those things take a lot of storage, so we wanted to make sure we took care of that. And again, this drawing has not been updated to show the concession stand and that, but it's in this area here. Again, just for orientation purposes, this is the current front door to the, to the high school. You can kind of see where that placement is. This is a rough drawing of the mezzanine level, so the second level of the gym. So we are looking at additional seating there, retractable seating. We've talked about hanging batting cages and those things. There would be room for small wrestling mats up there. Again, a track area that could potentially go all the way around. It is a narrow track. It's not going to be a track meet level thing, but at least could be used for walking or small groups. And again, additional storage there, most likely sound equipment and those things on that second level. Exits out of the corners. There is an elevator. Total seating of around 2,000 still. We're still in that ballpark. Or fieldhouse, so to speak. Sorry, that's a bad joke. Elevation, so this is preliminary, of course, but just to kind of give you an idea of the scale, so this is the existing front door to the high school office. So you can kind of get a picture of how the scale of that building would sit. It does go all the way, there is room for a drive still between the building and Cedar Street, but that's about it. So it is a large addition. Shifting back over toward the band and choir addition, so again, just as a reminder, the red outline is the tornado safe room. So that is where that would be located. This has, as I said before, has all changed since yesterday. So what we've actually done is shifted this storage area, which is actually for the band and choir programs. It was just fit better there in earlier discussions. But because of that drop, what we've actually looked at is taking this entry foyer area, there's enough clearance there that we can actually turn that into a two-story addition. So we already had to have an elevator or a chairlift, rather, to address the ADA accessibility and a very long ramp that was going to have to be outside to address ADA accessibility. By making that a two-story addition, we will gain storage room and be able to eliminate that ramp and everything outside and simply use the chairlift elevator scenario for ADA accessibility. It will clean up the outside of the building a lot and give us a much more efficient use of that space. That's the plan as of today. Still subject to change, but we're working on it. Moving into the auditorium area, just to kind of orient you, this is the small gym here on the right side. So the existing gym, the existing regular gym is here. This area would be the existing band room. This theater classroom is the existing choir room. So what we've actually done here is the current hallway out of the small gym to the big gym is here. That gets eliminated. We'll cut a new entry into the area that will join with the storm shelter and create a new hall that isn't closed, it is a hallway, to connect the two pieces. What that does is allow us to put these areas in that are, that are light locks so that during performances, people coming in and out of the theater aren't flooding the room with light. That's a, that's an important piece for the theatrical productions. It also allows us to expand that area using the restroom plumbing that was off the small gym that we've not used in a long time, but using the plumbing that was there to expand and add dressing rooms for the green room for the theater. So that will be in the backstage area where it needs to be and allow us to do that. Theater classroom for the theater to be all integrated in through and to the backstage area of the stage. And again, talking about extending this proscenium and thrust of the stage out just a couple of feet is kind of the discussion. The, the sightline issue is here on the corners anyway, so extending that a couple of feet and maybe losing that front row or two would, would eliminate that is what we think at this point.
Dr. Dare?
Sir?
They need to be careful in how they use the term new theater plan.
Okay.
The new theater plan or the new theater plan? Today's plan or?
This is today's plan, yes. The new, new, the new, new theater plan, yes.
I might be turned around a little bit, but for guest locker rooms, will the guest teams use our current locker rooms that we have now and then the team will use the home locker room?
So football, let me go back here. Football will continue to use the locker rooms downstairs.
Okay.
But for basketball and volleyball, those things, we actually have two locker rooms on each side. One is what we would call a varsity locker room, which would be our, our varsity game locker room. The other is a PE locker room. So our guests would use the PE locker rooms.
I was trying to figure out how they would get back through the.
Yeah, no, they'll be right there in the gym.
Okay.
Any questions, more questions about the high school? I don't want to jump past that one. We are, we are getting very close. Truman Elementary, also on the 13th, that afternoon, we'll meet with the architectural team over at Truman with their building committee. This will be the first opportunity the Truman staff have had with the architect directly. We've traded thoughts and ideas back and forth, but they will actually have some, some things on paper for the staff to look at and start discussions there. I like to call these the needs, wants, and wishes meetings. So we, we try to focus them in on what, you know, let's start with what we absolutely need. We know we want to address the secure entrance. We know we need to do some, some improvements for the library and the new space. And then we go to wants, what would we like to do? And then if there's, you know, just room in there and space and all that, what will we wish for? And it's always an enjoyable process because people do take a lot of ownership in their buildings. So again, at Truman, just real quick, you know, we're talking about an addition on the front that would address the secure entry vestibule, new office administrative areas. The library area with some potential additional spaces such as classrooms would become the storm shelter. Some minor kitchen renovations and cafeteria renovations there. That's just a piece that needs some attention to help their serving process. And then looking at that existing library area and existing office area and what we can turn those into better spaces for. And again, on safety and security, it is a large part of every discussion. We spend a great deal of time talking about these, even on the high school plans. Part of the changes over time with the placement of the buildings and that, where we put the concession stand and the restrooms and all that deal with supervision. It deals with the traffic patterns. It deals with sightlines and entrances and, so we try to think through all those things. So it is a constant and ever-present part of our conversations. We do have money in the bond to address specific areas of safety and security and that is coming. But, you know, just want everyone to know again, that we do talk about it on a constant And with that, I would take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So.
Exciting times.
It is exciting.
I'd like to, I like the visual. Yeah, starting to, you know, really see it.
Item B on old business, the updated Rala 31 learning plan. Mr. Hounson?
So very brief presentation tonight, which I think is good because we've hit a level of consistency where we're not seeing changes meeting to meeting or month to month. So just some updates and mentioned a couple of new items here. So first of all, leave this up every time, we are full seated learning K through 12 along with our virtual learning that's been available to students all throughout the year. We are continuing to push out information about vaccine availability to all of our staff. So as we receive it, we push those opportunities out and allow people to schedule on their own. Again, this is optional. We are encouraging teachers to pursue the opportunity if they are comfortable, but allowing them to choose the provider and the type of vaccine that they're wishing to get. So again, this all started for us on March 15th, so it doesn't seem like it's been, you know, roughly two weeks that it's been open, but there's been a lot of activity since then. But again, anyone connected with Rala Public Schools is eligible and we've been sending that information out. So just a little bit of time on this. This is our district COVID data. This is as of the close of school on Wednesday, so yesterday. As of yesterday, and it's been the case all week, we've had no positive tests within, no active cases within the school district, either with students or staff. As you can see, our student quarantine numbers thankfully are way down. So again, some consistency there that we've been able to reach as far as instruction. Now, just a couple of notes of caution, I hate to be, you know, a wet blanket here, just a couple of notes of caution. So this week, we met with our community group online and I think the university is in a very similar position as us, and that is that we returned from a one-week spring break this week. And during that week, just anecdotally, we know that a lot of people traveled and went to new places. So we are carefully watching these two weeks upon the return from spring break. We are certainly hoping that we are able to maintain our status, but we had an administrative team meeting today where we talked about these two weeks will be crucial for us to kind of see if there is an impact from spring break or not. And I think the university is tracking kind of a similar idea, their spring break matched up with ours. In that meeting, we talked about, you know, if you watch the news, you see a slight national uptick. Missouri typically is a few weeks behind the national trend. I will say that in checking the University of Missouri database, we are seeing a slight uptick in the last week or so for Phelps County. The most recent data that we had was for March 31st. And in the previous 14 days, as reported on the University of Missouri website, we were up to 86 cases in the previous 14 days. We had, which is still far better than we were at certain points during the school year, but we had been kind of living in the 50s and 60s, just kind of moving along there for a couple of months. So I'm hoping that this uptick is just that, just a momentary uptick. I hope it doesn't follow us into the schools. Obviously, we can't be a lot better than we are now. We hope it stays that way, but we are carefully watching that as we go. So around the district, left most of the bullets up there, just a few things. We are continuing to look at summer school and what we will look like for summer. Now, as far as when I say what we will look like, we are fully planning on a full summer school program at the Wyman Middle School and the junior high. The virtual classes that we would offer would be the same credit-bearing virtual classes that we've offered previously for high school students. But depending on the numbers that we were looking at in the community, we are still working with the health department on what our mitigation efforts might look like. With a smaller population, with a shorter day, we are looking at can we start, can we start transitioning from where we are now to where we hope to be in the fall? Can we use summer school as a transition period to start trying some new things out and start reducing some of our mitigation efforts? But still too early to tell on that, but that, that is conversations that we're having. Spring sports are underway. Commencement Friday, May 14th, still on. Dr. Pritchett sent out, I should have added in here, Dr. Pritchett sent out the announcement yesterday, the prom date is Saturday, April 24th, which is quick, that's three weeks away. And I'll tell you, we recently changed that date out of, I hate to say this phrase, an abundance of caution, but we had prom one week before graduation. And our fear was if we did have a positive case that would result in any quarantines at all, we wanted to move it away from graduation so that it would not impact someone's ability to walk and graduate. So we did move prom till the 24th. They're sending out more details about that here in the next few days. And at our administrative team meeting today, a lot of the conversations centered around what, what do our end-of-year activities look like in the buildings? When you think about what the end of a school year looks like, there are field trips, there are kindergarten graduations, there are third-grade promotion ceremonies with parents. There are lots of traditional activities that we would like to continue to offer. So our discussion was which ones are essential that we need to offer? Of course, they all are. So how can we offer them? So I, I think we made some good progress today, still some work to do about how we can offer those types of activities. They may look a little different, they may be a little more spaced out through the school day, and rather than five third-grade classes in the gym at one time, it may be each individual homeroom and their parents recognizing that, that class's accomplishments moving on to fourth grade. It may be some unique ideas like that. But we are working on what does this end of the school year look like and how can we offer those opportunities for parents, kids, and teachers to celebrate what has certainly been a unique school year here at the end? So, as I said, pretty short. We've reached some consistency in just educating kids and coming to school. We certainly want it to stay that way and we are hopeful that it will. And I'd be happy to take any questions about activities in and around the district.
I just really appreciate the efforts of our administrators to get back to some of these normal, I guess it's a loose word, but.
Yeah.
Some of these traditional end-of-school year activities like prom and, and field trips and graduations and promotions and stuff. I know it's hard work.
So, you know, the prom, there will be some mitigation practices in place. There will be some masking, there will be some distancing. We talked about, there are some schools who say that they are keeping three feet of distance between kids at all times. We are not trying to say that because that.
Good work.
That is not going to be worth policing for the entire night. But we feel like if we can offer prom with some of the safety measures in place, that kids will appreciate it, parents will appreciate it, and they'll have a great experience along with some safety measures in place that are just necessary if we're going to offer something like that. But we think we're doing it in a very reasonable, well-thought-out way that will allow kids to experience it in a good, positive way.
Okay?
Okay.
No questions? Thank you. All right. Comments? Emily is not here this evening, but any board members are welcome to comment on events taking place in the district. Five of us went to Bell for the MSBA regional meeting. Good to get back together, been a couple of years since we've met, so.
The, the baseball team took first place last weekend in the Four Rivers Tournament. That was, that was great news. They did a good job.
Is that a four-game tournament?
Yeah.
It was a four-game tournament.
They took first out of 12 teams.
Wow. That's awesome.
So I'd like to also commend the staff over at RTI. You may have seen on our Facebook page today, Gina pushed some information out. Governor Parson was in Rala today. He was overturning the vaccination site at Phelps Health and then came over to tour RTI, Rala Technical Institute. He has a strong backing of career and technical education and getting kids' skills and the workforce development in the state of Missouri. So he was at RTI today, toured several of the programs.
So he was at RTI today, toured several of the programs, experienced driving the robots, the competition robots that you've seen multiple times, did the virtual reality paint applicator that you saw demonstrated, talked to some of the FFA teachers from around the area who were there with district, district FFA contests were taking place in Rala the last few days. So we had kids from, all the way from West Plains to St. Louis at the fairground, at RTI, at different places doing the FFA contests. So he was able to tour all of that, was very complimentary of the programs he saw at RTI, which we're all obviously very proud of, but very well organized. The interactions that he had were with our students. We were very clear, we wanted him talking to our kids, not that teachers don't have valuable insight, but we really wanted him to just interact with the kids who are experiencing the programs and talking about their goals, what they're getting out of the programs and what they hope to do with their education in the future. So it was a really cool afternoon. Dr. Herman, Dr. Chapman and all the staff over there did a really nice job of planning a very short window of time that he was able to stay but have him experience lots of different programs at RTI. So I want to commend them, it was a, it was a really good, good experience in having him here. So he did leave with some Rala swag, I don't know if you'll ever see him wear it again, but he does have some ponchos and sweatshirts made by the students at RTI in the graphic design program that he can take with him, so. But you can see pictures and a little write-up on our Facebook page and both from RTI. And I believe the governor's office also pushed out some of the pictures from the visit as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hounson. I'll draw your attention to the written reports at the end of the packet, financial reports. And also note that the MSBA legislative day is Monday, April the twelfth. Several of us will be going up for that day. So if there's nothing else, I need a motion to go back into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Scarlett, thank you. Mark, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And yes, we are back in closed session.